Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. If everybody would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. You see? We'll call please. Tanya?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Libby?
Here.
Becky?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
And we have a quorum. I need to get a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda for tonight.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I need to may get a motion to approve the minutes for November sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, we need to make a motion to confirm the executive session that we had with the RDC.
Just as it says.
Yeah, just as it says, yeah.
I'll make a motion to confirm the topic from the joint executive session held on Wednesday, November first, two thousand twenty-three between the Town Council and Redevelopment Commission was the only topic discussed.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, Joe, we're, this is the first reading of the two thousand twenty-four salary ordinance.
Okay, well, I'm there before you, I've prepared the salary ordinance, just as the budget that was approved. And I can go through the changes on this if you like. Uh, the clerk treasurer, there was an additional five thousand dollars added to the ordinance for that. The, uh, the rest of the hourly folks, there was three percent added to their base pay. The street and distribution employees, we, we used to have it set up to where I had one certified operator back there, and he was the only one getting, um, the pay for the certified distribution operator for the system. And I've got three other guys going through class now, and I want to make sure that, you know, everybody that's got that certification is going to be able to, you know, be paid for that. So I did just change your wording, it's still in there the same way, street and distribution employee, instead of having a separate one, I just included him in that for the base pay, and then added those additional fees back in the benefit pay, like we do all the other benefits that we have. Uh, let's see, yeah, that would be under number five. So the water, Water Works Distribution Operator Certification was added to that category. And then also, uh, as approved with the budget, the police and investigator pay is going, it'll actually be like from a thousand dollars a year to fifteen hundred a year. So it went up from thirty-eight forty-six by pay, bi-weekly pay to fifty-seven sixty-nine. And then also the PD specialty pay per year went from one hundred up to two hundred and fifty dollars. So that was actually three dollars and eighty-five cents bi-weekly, up to nine sixty-two bi-weekly. The other change, let's see that we added, we included a, uh, planning and building administrator, or not administrator, but yeah, administrative assistant for that, uh, for that department. And that was approved in the budget at eighteen fifty. So with that being said, everything that you see there is what was discussed and approved in the budget, but what I would like to ask the council for tonight, if I could, if you would consider, if you can see where the police part-time civilian, uh, was twenty dollars and sixty cents. I would like to move the deputy clerk and the planning administrator, adminis- yeah, administrator, I don't know, I have a hard time with that, to, to meet that same pay. I think they're all kind of doing the same work, and it seemed like they all should be in line at the twenty sixty per hour. And those are typically twenty-five hours a week or less.
Who do you want to bring up?
The two at the bottom where it says deputy clerk and planning and building admin.
It'd be hard to find somebody to work for ten.
Aye.
Are you gonna be able to find somebody to work for ten bucks an hour?
You know, some of those rates have been in there for several years, and we've not filled those positions as far as like part-time folks and stuff like that at the park. So we've not increased those. If you want to, we can.
I mean, but can you find somebody to cut grass for ten bucks an hour?
I doubt it.
Okay, so what do you want to do?
Well, i- if you want to make a suggestion, we can increase it now, or we can wait until the day we feel like we need to hire somebody and, and bring them in. And we can do an amendment to the salary ordinance.
Maybe Toasty needs a part-time job, ten bucks an hour mowing grass in a summer time? Well? Sold. Sold. What do you, what do you guys think, uh?
Who's, who, what kind of people are we hiring for summer employees? Are they high school kids?
We haven't hired anybody for a while.
No.
Oh, maybe Heat could help us on that. That's a good idea. I saw him walking this way.
It's when they wanted to work.
He's the Parks Manager. Um, the part of problem we have with the temporary summer help is especially high school kids. Our biggest growing season is not necessarily the summer, right? It's, that's usually the driest time. They don't get out of school until, you know, the end of May, and now with school start, especially Mount Vernon starting back up in July, that's why we've kind of gone away from that. That, that was originally put in, I think it was maybe three or four years ago before Mount Vernon really went to that balanced schedule, and we had like-
I think this year they start beginning of August. I think they're back to August this year.
Pushed back.
It's all of June and all of July they're out this year.
Right, and so, I mean, th- that time period, our biggest issue is finding somebody part-time that would be, let's call it from the start of mowing season, usually the last week of March-ish, until we're mowing up this week. This will probably be the last week where we're quote-unquote mowing. Finding somebody part-time for that is, and we've got the full-time employees now. I would foresee us, unless we get into a point where, get to a point where budget-wise we can, and space-wise, we grow the parks, I don't know that we're gonna need necessarily part-time people moving forward unless we start picking up acreage where we do need to have some extra hands available. So.
I can say that we've got a little bit of redundancy built into that, too, as far as, it says for the summer employees, ten dollars an hour, and it says other part-time and temporary help, fifteen forty-five an hour.
Okay. So you might need maybe some help when we take over the park over there at Vernon North, no, is it called Vernon North? Mount Vernon North, yeah, I mean, I don't, is that, is that still? Is that still, I mean, is that still something we're planning on?
Yeah, we'll take that over eventually.
Yeah, and I just, I know it was until after that last phase was done that they're working on, um, I don't know, it just depends on what that looks like, the way that it's being maintained right now with just mowing along kind of the trail and keeping those natural grasses. I don't know that we would need extra, necessarily extra hands for that. Once the trails get kind of turned over, I mean, that's winter stuff, so it doesn't really apply to part-time as far as clearing trail and stuff to and from the school off of that. I just, you know, we're talking, if you're looking at other parks departments, you're talking bigger parks departments that have, you know, thirty-five, forty properties, or, you know, Pendleton, for example, who has a golf course and things like that, I don't know that we'll, maybe we do, but I don't know that we'll get there. Yeah, I mean, I, I, my suggestion would be just keeping it comparable to whatever the other part-time employees are. I just don't know that we'll have necessarily need from the park side of it anytime soon. Possibly. The problem that we have right now is we'd have to buy more equipment, then on top of that, we've got two mowers and there's three of us, so while two people are mowing, more person's trimming, so I mean, it's just, it's a budget thing, right?
Maybe we can, we'll address it next year, when there's might be a need, we can get them.
Let's just go ahead and change it to the same, the other part-time, the fifteen forty-five. The summer employees and the temporary lab tech, make them all fifteen forty-five. Weird number.
Yeah, not fifteen fifty. Yeah, I don't know why it's fifteen forty-five, but.
Which is because of the percentage increase that goes up each time, just towns.
That's.
That's why some of them in with like sixty-two cents or.
Okay, and did everybody agree to move the other two up to twenty sixty?
Anybody? Yes, yeah, yeah. Deputy clerk and the planning admin.
So everybody's good with the deputy clerk?
You guys good with the deputy clerk and the planning, building administration, twenty, twenty dollars, sixty cents? Deputy clerk and planning and building, bring them up to twenty sixty, the same as the least part-time civilian. Which they're, they're all clerical positions and basically do the same thing.
Writing it down till I hear.
Yes.
Did you get that, Joe? Okay, anything else? Anybody got anything else down here that?
Now we'll be to ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash eleven A.
So we need to do a motion for the first reading?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the two thousand twenty-four salary ordinance.
With the changes discussed.
Okay, make tonight.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think he will get that, uh, updated and back to you for the next meeting.
Well, we have no old business, so, Joe, you can.
Yes, um, I do have one other issue that I needed to bring up. It did, uh, and I apologize for bringing this to you late, kind of come to our attention with, uh, the Madison Lofts now going online, and we need to bill them to get their first bill this next week. And with that, and looking at the way we connected service, they wanted to do one big master vault and meter pit. Typically with the, um, apartments and the way our policies reads, we meter each one individually, and that makes it easy to, uh, set the base rate and the consumption for the water in the sewer on, uh, each one of those units. Um, on this particular building has forty-two units in it. So there's really not a good way with the way our policies are written now to capture all of those. So this, uh, what we've prepared this evening is just an amendment to our utility policies that allows us to capture the base pay for the forty-two units. And then, uh, the consumption then would be just added as a, as a gross, I guess, for the water in the sewer. So there'd be a base for the water in the sewer for the forty-two units.
So did we miss out on the capacity fee, or did we have already?
No, man, we, we've charged them per unit, just like we would if they were individually metered. We charged them. Yeah. There's, looks like seventeen pages, looks like an awful lot there, but realistically, it's all right there on the front page. This was, um, and Alex was kind enough to put this together for us last minute this morning. I sent it to him, and I was actually at the doctor's office, and he punched it out pretty quickly. But, uh, all the pages in the back from page three on is our existing utility policies, and it does have that, uh, update included to it. Correct, and that would allow us to go.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution number twenty twenty-three dash eleven B, amending the utility policies.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can we just sign this one, or you got one for us to sign?
No, just that one. The one that you have, you can sign, okay, and just pass it around, please. She's got.
Fritz, vote no. Was he a nay? What was that vote? Was that five oh or four one?
I, I, I didn't even. I, I, I just didn't get a chance to read over this. I, I'd rather not vote at all. I'd say nay. I'd just say nay for me, please, and then I'll.
Okay.
What else you got, Joe?
That's all I have, unless you have something for me.
When, when are they supposed to strip the parking lot again?
Well, actually, I'm working on that. I'm laying it out, and I've got most of it laid out. Uh, it rained on us a little bit Friday, so I didn't get it finished out. My goal is to try to get it done this weekend. And it looks like we're gonna gain inner eleven spots. So, that'll help.
That's good.
We want to bring it back next.
Adam, you got anything for us?
Nope, not tonight, but if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to, hey, to address them.
Still on schedule for the demolition? That you know her?
Yeah, I mean, I'll have to wait till I see it, but supposedly it's supposed to happen tomorrow, so, um, it's really great news. It's, it's long overdue and I'm looking forward to that blight going away.
Do you know if there's, she's still considering to keep the garage, or are they gonna take it all down now?
Um, I haven't heard anything different from the owner, uh, other than a few weeks ago when she said she wanted to keep the garage. So I had some questions for her about if she wanted to do that, that'd be okay, um, but I, like, I'm sure others are just concerned about what it's gonna look like if I would have, you know, drywall hanging there with something, so. Oh, I guess, uh, she didn't get back to me on that, so I guess if it becomes an issue, we'll go after it further.
Okay.
Heath?
The only thing that I have is the email that I sent everyone earlier this morning, um, and I'm gonna apologize for kind of the late notice of it, just kind of going over the logistics over the last few days with Natalie and trying to really tighten in Winterfest as we get real close to it. Um, talking with Pat last week, him and I went on a couple errands and stuff, and it just, it, from a safety standpoint, it doesn't make sense on my end to have families and kids crossing Stat Street, knowing that, that that's going to be open, even if we were to close down, um, stat between, or I'm sorry, main between stat and church, like we've done in the past. Um, so I'm asking the council tonight if we're able to utilize the new public parking lot for the kid zone. Um, obviously for safety reason, being number one first and foremost, um, we do have Santa Claus has been moved, Benny Eads has been the sponsor of Santa Claus, he's gonna continue to do that, but for this year, it's actually gonna move over to Lloyd Design right there, um, off of, um, in front of the post office. Um, I would like to put the skating rink in the public parking lot and be able to utilize some of that area for the kid zone and some additional vendors that we have. Obviously, we can leave that alley coming out of the American Legion, we can block it there, and so people, if they do come down the alley, can still get out right there if they need to. Um, I think this year it would work a little bit better, partly because obviously there's already barricades up on Stat and Merrill, right there saying that the road is closed, and there hasn't, we haven't seen a ton of traffic down that way. From a parking perspective, yes, we do lose some parking, or lose the parking for a public parking lot, but now we had gained that parking that we wouldn't have had additionally there on North Main, north of Stat Street, all of that parking will be available, because all of that will be open now. Um, so I'm asking the council to approve being able to use the public parking lot for Winterfest this year, uh, given the circumstances with construction.
Do you need the whole parking lot, or just the front side that is, uh, the same length as the building?
We typically always use the length of the building. That's where the restrooms and everything go right there. We would like to use the bigger area for the skating rink and just keep everything contained.
The whole parking lot.
The parking lot, yeah, minus the, like I said,
Yeah.
right there where the alley kind of comes out, we can block it there, so if cars do come down through the bank parking lot and up the, up the alley right there, they can still get out, um, would be my suggestion.
Do we know what the parking spot difference is between how many we're gaining and how many we're losing? Like approximately?
No, I mean, it's gonna be a cluster anyways, um, simply because, you know, anytime we have an event, you guys know this, anytime we have an event in town, whether it be a main street, um, it, it tends to be just people everywhere. And again, who knows on the weather? I mean, that's the big question mark for Winterfest, too. I mean, if it's not very nice outside, we could have five hundred people. If it's like it was this past weekend, there'll be three thousand people out there. Um, and so I just wanna kind of condense everything and keep everything from essentially Stat Street, Jennifer's Flower South this year. Um, just so we've got kind of a safe area for those kids, because let's be honest, I mean, Winterfest is nice, but it's really geared towards Santa Claus and the kid zone, and the skating rink's a huge attraction. Um, and so being able to have an area for that, that I think I'm comfortable with, Pat's comfortable with, as far as being able to set up and not have to really worry about people crossing, you know, streets without, um, without that safety aspect of it. It just, it, it makes more sense for this year.
So that's not gonna cause a problem with the vendor setting up, though, will it? If you're gonna set the rank up early?
Set up, so the event runs twelve to seven. The vendor setup is Natalie's got most of the vendors coming from seven to nine in the morning, um, and we'll get people out of there. We'll have some cars kind of flowing through there a little bit with vendors and stuff. The goal for her, I think, is to have people come in off of, right there in front of the post office and come in that way and head left or right. Um, if we've got to push people through there, we will. The nice thing about doing it in the public parking lot is, if you remember in the past, we had to close down, Main Street there between church and stat to get that skating rink set up the night before. The nice thing being in the public parking lot, uh, we can do that during daylight hours and kind of cordon that off. There'll still be room for people to move on, you know, Friday night, they'll have to work around that, and then just comes Saturday from, you know, seven AM until essentially we get everybody cleaned up and out of there, um, seven PM on Saturday, so. And we've got quite a, quite a few things going on, just so everybody is aware, the library is doing something, um, at the community center that day as well. We've got the parade still. Um, we've got, I'm hosting a, uh, roller derby event at the community center in the evening slash afternoon evening, um, so there's gonna be a lot of people flowing in and out of, uh, town that week, so.
Lot going on. I'm okay with it.
I'm good with it.
I'm fine.
Think you're good.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Heath. Yeah, Saturday the second.
Yep. Decorations and piancino are up.
Nice, thank you. They're beautiful.
Hopefully we have the snowflake problem solved.
Yeah, I saw that.
And Heath, just out of curiosity, do we have, um, I know it's some of these larger, uh, uh, larger events around the country, they've been putting up different physical barriers at the vehicular access points, um, to block anybody from doing something terrible. Do we have anything, like any kind of police cars that are set up at the end?
We do not. Only option we would have is to see if the part, or the street department has concrete barricades to place in those areas.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have, we don't have enough cars, nor the manpower to, to block entrances and exits and thoroughfares that aren't already blocked with road signs.
Yeah, I just bring it up because it's a tragic time in which we live, that's for sure.
Thanks, Heath. Okay, Patrick, it's all yours.
I have nothing except to let you guys know that I will be off for the next four days. My family's coming in from out of state, and we'll spend some time for Thanksgiving and hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving and holiday.
Yeah, me too, Pat. Thanks.
Is that a vacation, or?
Yeah, since I heard that, until my phone starts ringing at three AM and then it's right.
Is there any, is there any update on the Speedway? Is there no, no more evidence?
There's no gas.
Yeah.
Oh, on, on the armed robbery?
Yeah.
There is not an update, no. Speedway currently has no gas, though.
Yeah, they currently have no gas. We're working on that.
Yeah. But yeah, the armed robbery, we, we are working it, and we are sorting through hours of videos and, and there's just not a lot there.
You look at the road closure and everything, you just made a perfect opportunity for somebody just to out and then, I know, I know, it's just interesting.
Missy, do you have anything?
Nada.
Nada. Alex?
Nothing. Does she have questions for me?
Did, did you ever look into the, I think we had a conversation about the, the library board thing. You were gonna look into that to see if we could act as for I'm sorry, bark, sorry, yes, bark. Did you, did you answer me? I think you did. Now that I'm listening to myself talk, I do remember you sending me an answer to that, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
To the grant.
Right.
The grant, Adam.
Yeah.
One that we're looking at, they want an actual board that was established under the statute, so something separate from you guys, so.
It would depend, I guess, then on. Okay.
But if I didn't answer you?
You did, I think. I'm sorry, it's, it's, I just had a memory flash while I was talking to you, and I was like, yeah, I think you did tell me. Sorry about that. Uh, anybody with public comments? Okay. Council comments?
I don't think I have anything.
Not me.
I do want to say that we're working on trying to get some signage for the businesses. Um, we're working with Endot right now, waiting on them to, I'm not gonna wait very long, though, if they don't get right on it, because I told her I wanted to have something up before the fest, the Winterfest. So if that happens, then yay for us, and I'm also asking them to do some, uh, markers along sixty-seven for the openings, the temporary openings for the businesses are there, so people don't, I've seen people slam on their brakes because they don't know where to go in at, so hopefully that'll, coming down the road, they'll be able to see them, and so we're, we're working on that, so keep your fingers crossed that if they don't do anything, I'm, I might volunteer my own services to make the signs and
We know some people who have spray paint.
Yeah, yeah, yes, we do. Plywood and spray paint, we could do that, kidding me. Yeah. Yeah. I just wanted to let you know that. That's all I got.
The only thing I have is all the complaints I'm getting on the water and the fixtures that people send to me, and we've discussed that, and let me tell them, I've even told them to flush out their hot water tanks. You know, that needs to be done once or twice a year, anyway.
Yeah, they should.
Yeah. So, that's all I've got.
And just to reiterate, when you do that, it doesn't take a lot of water. Thirty gallons, maybe. You're talking about pennies on the dollar, so.
For the water, they're flushed, I know.
Well, if I could add, just to kind of give an update, I know the, uh, the water treatment plant, the new plant is up and running. There's still some bugs that's gotta be worked out. They're still, uh, working on the third well to get it tied back in, and the more they jostle those pipes around and work with the old stuff, they're breaking some rust loose inside the pipe. It's nothing from the outside, it's being introduced into the water system, it's already within the pipe, the rust will build up on the inside of that, and whenever you turn the water pressure down a little bit, turn it back up, you, you cut into pipe, you move things around, it, uh, it tends to break it loose. So when the water pressure gets low, it breaks it loose. When the water pressure is high, for, like, we're flushing a hydrant or a brake or something, it'll break it up, so. Unfortunately, I don't know whether we're getting burst of pressure with this new plant, but we're getting several water main breaks, so we're having to fix a lot of those. So far, all of them we fixed live, we've not had to kill anything a hundred percent, so we've been able to, you know, keep some water flowing. But I know Helmcrest this evening, or actually earlier today, they were working on that. They did dial the water pressure down a little bit so they could get in there and take the pipe loose and reconnect just a fitting that went on it. But with that, that is some old, old cast iron pipe out there that it needs flushed, and the, the hydrants need flushed all over town, and with the high demand we've had for the irrigation this last summer, and with a new plant- And with a new plant coming on and the old plant not being able to keep up with that demand, we were not able to flush this, this summer. And so that kind of messes us up. So the minute we can get out and flush everything, I think it'll stir stuff up again when we flush. But I think that's when we're gonna see everything start to get crystal clear again and they're probably happy with their water. But as soon as we start flushing, we're gonna stir it up, so. It's kind of where we're at and where that's gonna.
Yeah, they're gonna, I think it's gonna hap, I can't, yeah.
It's bad that we can't really flush in the wintertime when we can get started. And if we just get started, we're not gonna fix the problem, because the minute we start flushing. Close to the center of town at the tower, we might start getting some clean water there, but we've disturbed it enough that we've created. Agitating the water into their end of the system and, and those folks are gonna experience some nasty water until we can get all the way around and flush them all. So we really wanna wait till we can try to go through the whole system at one time.
So what do we say to people like Becky was saying that it, it doesn't stop? Like when they run it and it doesn't stop? What, what is the best? I mean, is there, is there anything else other than flushing their water heater maybe, or if they're not running water, hot water?
I would guess most of the people are, I mean, they could be experiencing some of it from their hot water heater that's built up in there, but it's probably the cold water. And if it's, if it happens to be stirred up in the mains and everything at the time, you may not be able to get it to run clear. But if you wait for a little bit and kind of let everything settle out and then let it run for a little bit, it should clear up. Because if it just happened to be, you know, there happens to be a, a break or a surge or somebody flushed a hydrant for some reason. Then all that water's been stirred up in that main and it's, until the particles settle out in there, you're probably not gonna get it to clear up. So if you can't get it to clear up now, wait a few hours and you'll probably be able to get it to clear up pretty good.
That's all I have.
You got a question in the audience?
We got public comment.
Yeah, that shouldn't, it shouldn't keep going. It's one of those things and, and again, with. Like leaks and things like that, it could be isolated areas. So we could send out a message again through the text alert, letting people know. But if it's, if it's just one area, we can obviously let those folks know that, you know, that we've got a, a, a water main break or something and they could experience some. Discolored water until, you know, everything's been repaired and cleared up a little bit, but it doesn't always affect the entire town whenever something like that happens. I know there's some people and I heard earlier from Tony, you know, one, one neighbor may experience dirty water where the one across the street has never experienced it. It's always been, you know, pretty clear. We're open any day. It should be, we're hoping we're getting all the bugs worked out. I mean, it's. We went for several years and I don't wanna curse myself here, but I mean, maybe. Three or four or five water leaks a year, they were minimal. But since we started redoing this plant, it seemed like we'll have two or three in a week. It seemed like there's a lot. I'm hoping we get to the point where we get caught up on that, get some of the mold pipes repaired, replaced, and we get back to that point where we're not having. Keep my fingers crossed that we're, you know, after we fix one leak, we're back on the, the mend to where we're not gonna have another leak for quite a while. But unfortunately, it's not, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but we, we feel like we're making really good progress and it should be. You know, anytime as far as a water treatment plant, as long as they're putting out clean water, it should start to settle out. But then the minute we start flushing again, it's gonna, it's gonna stir it up. I wouldn't call it a defect as much as an effect, I guess, once with a new plant. Um, coming onboard, if all the bugs are worked out of it and it's producing clean water, then we should start to see that clean water out into the system.
It does come out of the plant that way. Yeah. Yeah. That's, yeah, we posted something on the town page and then Facebook too about the condition and what happens after the, the startup of the plant was. That was here last week or the week before, I think. And that'll, you know, that'll continue to happen, but what you're seeing here now is causing from what's in the pipe, not what's coming out of the plant. The water coming out of the plant is clean and it, and it gets tested on a regular basis. So that's what makes it hard to understand for people is, is why theirs is brown and somebody isn't, but it's, it's the amount. Of water in those pipes and how much sediment's been worked up. I mean, it's just, and I think the, and my, my question always was, is the pressure different? Is it causing it to, to do that? But mainly, we haven't been able to flush the hydrants like we normally do and this, this kind of stuff happens when you don't do that. So when we do some of those, some of that will go away, but it really won't all go away until we get all the hydrants flushed. And that probably won't happen until spring of next year because of the weather. You can't do it when the temperature is, you know, freezing or whatever. So we'll do as many as we can. They're gonna try to get started on that and it'll be, I think you're gonna can. Mostly closer to the plant, you're gonna work on those hydrants, isn't that what you?
Yeah, we usually start. The hydrant or the tower and work our way out. But with that being said, even though we don't have to wait until the hydrants are all flushed to start seeing clean water again, because. In the wintertime, when it starts to cool down and people aren't using as much, as long as we don't have breaks and the fire department doesn't have to hook onto a hydrant to do something. That settlement will settle out in those mains and they'll start, you know, running clear again unless it gets a high demand on the pipes. Until we get a chance to flush.
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when you're mixing old things with new things, I would think that it's gonna, you're gonna have some problems that are gonna need to be replaced, I would think over, yeah, I mean, that's what I would think.
That's what's happening when they break now. You gotta fix, you know, what's old.
Our original system, our original system was built in nineteen thirteen. There's some really old pipe out there that's, it's kind of.
And that's really where it's coming from. It's not coming from the plant. I mean, that's the, that's the thing that's hard for people to understand, because. The water comes from the plant, but what it's picking up is what's in the pipes, not, yeah. 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 And that's plenty of time too for, for a new plant to get up and running and to work out all the, you know, the, the little things like, you know, the, the, the chlorine. And the stuff that they've had to do lately is, you know, there's just things that have to be done, so it's, it's gonna take a while, but I would say probably by. Summer of next year, we ought to be great. What do you think, Joe?
I think so.
Yeah. Anybody else? Brits?
I'm good. They answered my question. Helmcrest called me today.
Okay. I need to get a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
My second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-eight.
All in favor?
Thank you all for coming.